Alrighty, so we are live now. We're calling to order the Tuesday, July 6th meeting of the Cordera Town Council. The first item on our agenda is closed session and the topic is conference with labor negotiator. We're going to first take public comment on our closed session item. So if anybody would like to make public comment on this, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we receive any emailed public comments on our closed session item?
Thank you Rebecca. No, we did not receive any emails for the comments.
Great. So the council is now going to adjourn to our closed session. So we're going to go to a different private Zoom meeting and we'll come back to this main public Zoom meeting at 6:30 to start the public portion of our town council meeting and report out on any actions that we might have taken during closed session. So we will see you at 6:30. Alrighty, thank you. Great. And the council is all here and staff is here. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the public portion of our meeting. So good evening, everybody. This is the June 6th, excuse me, July 6th meeting of the Cordera Town Council. We have just come back from a closed session item. We were discussing, the item was a conference with labor negotiator and the council did not take any reportable actions at this time. So we're not going to continue with the public portion of this meeting and we'll start with a roll call Rebecca whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Mongen.
Here.
Ravazia.
Here.
Vice Marcus Sisa.
Here.
And Mayor Beckman.
Here, thank you. And please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. That brings us to open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items that are not on our agenda and members of the public will be given three minutes apiece to do so. So if you'd like to make any public comments during open time, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we receive any emailed comments for open time?
Just refresh. I do not believe we received any emails for the comments for open time. No, we didn't. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up, so we will close open time. There are no present, oh, excuse me, a hand did just go up. So we're actually going to reopen and take a public comment from Pat Rivalio.
Thank you so much. I wasn't, I wasn't paying attention and then I nearly missed it. So I just wanted to report to you all that today was the kickoff of the new Redwood Community Swim Program. And I went and we had a very nice, a group of people show up, about eight women for aquacizing, two dads with a handful of kids snorkeling pretending like they were in Hawaii while the dads tossed a football around for a couple of hours. There are 16 lanes. It holds a maximum of 494 people. It is a huge pool with lots of room for swimmers. So we're hoping that lots of people will come out. The water temperature is 81 degrees. So it's a nice warm pool. So those of you who are squeamish about water temperatures will still be able to enjoy it. And there are water, there's swim lessons available and we're hoping that parents of children will, you know, get them water safe. Many of them who have missed two years of water safety training due to COVID. So they can just go to the pool and, and set up with an instructor there. And the program is free to economically disadvantaged folks. So anyone section eight qualified or, you know, with vouchers to show their credentials can, can show up and talk to Warren, who is the founder of a foundation aimed at teaching children how to swim who can't afford swim lessons. So thank you for your support of this. Todd needs to be thanked. He got both Cordera and Larkspur to kick in some money to help pay for the lifeguards and we really appreciate Todd doing that. And so thanks a lot, all of you for supporting that program. Really appreciate it. And, and come to the pool. It won't bite. I promise. Well, the water is nice and warm. Alright, that's all.
Great. Thank you very much, Pat. Thanks for letting us know and for your work on that and seeing no other hands up. We will close open time.
Can, can I make a public comment?
Yeah, please.
I just wanted to thank Mayor Beckman. Our firm has a two-week fellowship program for law students to try to spark the next generation of public lawyers to work in government. And it's a two-week program. We have a variety of speakers and they get a mentor and they come up with a research project. And Mayor Beckman kindly agreed to speak with our students and did a Q and A. And he, it was tremendously well-received by the students. They really appreciated hearing from him. So I just wanted to say thank you and I know that we'll be repeating the program. So if anyone is interested in participating next year, we would really appreciate your participation. So thanks again to the mayor. It was, it was really a great opportunity for the students to hear from you.
Thanks a lot, Amy. That's very nice of you. And I had a great time and I appreciated the, the invitation. And with that, we will close open time. There are no presentations tonight, which brings us to item four, our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require any further discussion. And any member of the council or public may pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion. And we'll start by asking if any council members or staff would like to pull any items from our consent calendar. And seeing none, we will turn this over to the public. If any members of the public would like to pull any items from our consent calendar for discussion, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments for any consent calendar items?
No, Mayor Beckman, we did not receive any emails for the comments.
Great, thank you. And we do have a hand up. So we're going to go to Lisa.
Okay, I just got in because I had a little difficulty, but I'm here because you're discussing the lower Redwood and another area of.
Yes, so Lisa, that's actually later on our agenda. That's not a consent counter item. That'll come up. That's going to be item 6C. So we'll have an opportunity, we'll get into an in-depth discussion on that and there'll be an opportunity for public comment on that item.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And we will hear from you then. Perfect. I am not seeing any other hands up for the consent calendar. So we'll bring it back to the council for a possible motion on the consent calendar. Would anyone like to make a motion? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion.
Great, thank you, sir. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. And Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Mongen.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Yes.
Vice Marcus Sisa.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes the consent calendar. We have no public hearings tonight, which brings us to our business items. And the first business item is 6A, which is authorization of the middle of an appeal to the Association of Bay Area Governments regarding Cordera's Rena numbers. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Great, thank you very much, mayor and council members. As you're aware, at the June 1st town council meeting, staff discussed whether or not the town should prepare a, an appeal request to ABAG. And at that meeting, the town council directed staff to go ahead and prepare an, an appeal request. And this is really a follow-up to that meeting on June 1st. And so in your staff report this evening, staff has prepared a, an appeal request pursuant to the requirements that ABAG has for submitting such appeals. And you know, tonight I was going to just briefly go through and outline sort of the, the basis for the appeal as drafted by staff. And I'm happy to answer questions or receive any comments you, you may have. As, as you know, we have until, well, the appeals are required to be submitted to ABAG by July 9th, which is Friday. So any direction or any comments that we get to this evening, if there are any modifications proposed, we can work those in before July 9th. But obviously, the, the most important part of tonight is to get the authorization from the council to submit the appeal to the Association of Bay Area Government. So I was thinking I would share my, my screen. Just give me a second here. I believe this will work. So can everyone see the staff report? Great. And so in effect, and as I mentioned when we went over this on June 1st, there are specific factors and there's only a few ways in which an appeal request will be heard by ABAG. Those were outlined in the ABAG appeal process. And two of the factors I've outlined as in the draft appeal request as a basis for submitting an appeal to ABAG. And that is that ABAG failed to adequately consider local planning factors and affirmatively furthering fair housing from the local jurisdiction survey relating to certain local factors outlined in this government code, section 65584.04E. And secondly, that ABAG failed to determine the share of the regional housing need in a manner that furthers and does not undermine the intent of the objectives listed in subdivision D of section 65584. The first one of those two is essentially goes into a lot of the environmental constraints. And the foundation for the, the appeal is based on environmental constraints that weren't adequately considered at the local level. And so the appeal itself is an attempt to, to elaborate on those local constraints. And, and that is what is included in the appeal request. There was an introduction, just sort of highlighting the fact that the town is committed to developing housing in its jurisdiction. I think we're one of the few jurisdictions in the state to have developed housing and met our Rena requirements for the current cycle, the fifth cycle housing element, which is 2015 to 2022. And that's what this chart really shows here. This is the, the, the cycle that we're in right now. And so well exceeding, as you can see by the percentages, the number of housing units in the current Rena cycle. But of course, this is a tenfold increase in the 72 units from the fifth cycle to 725 units in the current six cycle or the proposed six cycle, which will be from 2023 to 2031. Again, the basis for the appeal, I mentioned this before, information in the local planning in the survey that was, ABAG had requested that jurisdictions respond to about a year ago or a year and a half ago at this point. And that's what town staff did. And so really the basis for the appeal focuses on the fact that, as we all know, we've seen this map several times before, but that vast majority of the town's land is actually in either the FEMA 100-year flood zone or the wildland urban interface. And that's clearly seen in this map here. There's only a very few areas in town that are in neither of those areas. And all of that land is actually currently occupied with many of them with condominium developments and other residential, single-family homes, multifamily, multifamily development and whatnot. And so really, you know, very much constrained in terms of the availability of, of locating new development. I think the point made here is that actually what this high Rena will require us to do is to look for sites that are in the flood zone, because that is where the larger lot sizes exist. And we're actually even by, I think, ABAG's own, and I guess it's more the government code, notes that actually those are the real sites that are able to be developed, especially for low and very low income housing. You have to really look for larger development sites because it doesn't make financial sense to develop them at, on smaller sites. Of course, the flood zone also has problems with sea level rise, as we've know all too well. Having just completed our climate adaptation assessment, that's something we really need to be concerned about and plan for. So that's highlighted in the appeal request as well, that the same area where we'll likely have to look for development sites, housing opportunity sites for this next cycle is also going to be subject to sea level rise. And that's highlighted again in the, in the, in the letter. So the last part, I, I think those, the case was just made that, that those having to do that really undermines the objectives of the Rena in the first place. And so again, the appeals made based on that. The second, the second item that ABAG failed to determine Cordera's share of the regional housing needs in a manner that furthers and does not undermine the objectives listed in government code section 65584D. I've highlighted again the fact that we're putting units into the floodplain and those areas subject to sea level rise undermines those objectives regarding socioeconomic equity and efficient development patterns. And that's really the basis there. Furthermore, I've highlighted in this draft, some information regarding the fact that the planned area actually has our area of the county losing a significant number of jobs while this high number of units would basically create an imbalance in the, in the housing jobs ratio, which is another factor that typically ABAG would use to assess whether or not it's promoting efficient development patterns. And that's one of the standards they're required to adhere to. So that's, that's trying to sum it up in a nutshell. I'm sure you've all had a chance to read this. I'm happy to go into any specific part that you'd like further information on or elaboration on. But with that, I'll just end the staff report here. And I can again go into other aspects of this. There are several attachments. One of the requirements is that we provide evidence to support the appeal request. Tried to do that by highlighting some of ABAG's own materials with the attachments, making sure that our local jurisdiction survey response was in as part of the attachment. There's also some good, you know, I think an important academic paper included showing the susceptibility of affordable housing to sea level rise. And Cordera is actually cited in that paper. And and so all of those items provide some evidence to back up the claim that I think is made. And so that to me is, you know, when we drafted this and I, it's consistent with what we talked about in, in June 1st, that really the environmental constraints were the, were the overriding consideration in which we should focus this appeal request as, as a corner area is unique in that regard. I think with respect to a lot of other communities. So with that, I'll, I'll stop and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you very much, Adam. Do we have any questions from council members for staff? We'll start with Leela.
Thanks. I was just curious. So I looked through some of the, the, those government codes that talked about the objectives that they're trying to meet with these numbers. And I didn't know if you had any insight on, it seems to me that, you know, some of the objectives could be in conflict sometimes, right? Like you have, like, you want to be efficient and, you know, put them in, develop them efficiently. And then you also have environmental concerns and like, there could be a time when those, you can't satisfy both of them. And I just wondered if you have thoughts about what do, what does ABAG claim? How do they, how do they say they will resolve those kinds of conflicts?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the big ones really are, you know, housing affordability objectives, which is what this really is all about, is trying to produce more housing at all different income levels. And equity is, is obviously a big factor and objective that they've had in this Rena cycle. I think has been more of an emphasis than in past Rena cycles. And I think the, the one other factor that is more considered, I should say, considered more in planned Bay Area, which was a parallel longer-term plan for the Bay Area, is climate change and those, those impacts. And really, I, I think, I think it's, they're trying to align it the best they can, but I think you're right. There are challenges in trying to do that in a way with, without having all the information or answers of how to do that, especially as it relates to sea, sea level rise. And so I think that's what, that's sort of the importance of sort of calling out the local, real local conditions here and how there might be some unintended consequences with a regional plan that really promotes, I think, housing and equity goals in, in, in a through its methodology. And I think those are all goals that we can, you know, that a lot of people have stood for and stand behind. But there are local, very local issues as it relates to climate change impacts and sea level rise that I think this draft really tries to call out and, and make sure that they realize, you know, the, the local impacts that that may have on a jurisdiction like Cordera, which just doesn't have other, a lot of other options as we've shown.
Any of the factors that we're raising here, I can't remember. Are those similar to the factors that, that Mayor Beckman raised in his letter? Last, was it October challenging the proposed Rena numbers?
Well, yeah, it was highlighted in that, but I think that was an opportunity at that time to really try to influence the methodology in terms of the actual way in which they were, the criteria they were using in order to allot, allot the housing units. And so that was an opportunity to sort of try to modify that, that methodology noting some of these factors. But so it's similar, but it was a little bit different point in time in the process. Now the methodology has really been approved. And so we're not really able to appeal the methodology. But we're able to sort of talk about the, the fact that they were didn't adequately consider sort of some of the things that really are specific to Cordera.
Great, thank you, Leela. Let's go to Charles.
Adam or Todd, do you currently know out of the 22 municipalities in the county, how many are also going to file an appeal to the Rena numbers currently?
I think there's, you know, I, I know the ones that are not are Nevada, San Rafael. And then the ones that, there may, there may be one other, but the ones that are, I think, are, are, have been reported recently, Sausalito, Mill Valley. I believe Tiburon is San Anselmo. And so many, if not most of the other jurisdictions, but the larger jurisdiction, Nevada and San Rafael are not, I would say. And, and so I think it's a 11 jurisdictions totally, total in the county.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, Adam, what's the process after we file the letter on the, on the ABAG side? How do they work?
So they, that's a good question. I do have a see. So they will have, I mean, there's basically a, a period of time where they review the appeals. Here's the schedule. If I can, I can share this. This will be easier if I can just actually share this information right here. So if you can see this slide, basically that just shows here we are July 9th. There are, there is a basically a, a period of time where others will be able to see the appeal and can comment on the appeals, provide basically public comment. Or HCD can also do that, the State Housing, Department of Housing and Community Development. And then there's actually the public hearing in September or October where we would present the appeal. And as you can see, there's a final determination on whether to uphold or deny the appeal, October, November. And the final Rena with any modifications to basically if an appeal is upheld, that will just shift some of the numbers to another jurisdiction. That would be in November and December, those final Rena numbers would be assigned at that point.
Okay. And then do you know, do they look at this like, I want to say on a city by city basis? Or do you think they may look at it globally in the sense that it's not just us, it's Mill Valley, San Anselmo more, you know, collectively in Marin County? Or do you have any inclination on that? Or is it hard to judge with?
My inclination is that they're going to look at it on a city by city basis and they think that sort of have to look at those factors individually. So I, but I, I don't know. I, we, there is, they have public information about who's on the appeals board. I think it's a range of elected officials and others from around the Bay Area. But I, yeah, other than that, I don't, I don't know exactly the criteria, other than what we've outlined in the staff reports about what they're required to, the basis for the appeals and what, what the sort of purview is in that regard.
Okay. And just one last question. What's your general experience with these appeals in the past? Just out of curiosity. There's, you're smiling already.
Well, personally, I've never been through one. So I've, I have no idea, you know, as, as you know, of my previous planning experience was not in, it was more in New York. So it wasn't in California. So this will be my first time through the appeal process. So and I, and I, I, you know, I imagine it changes every eight years fairly. It can change from it's a fairly long time between the processes. So.
Okay. Hopefully you go one for one. Thanks.
Great, thanks Fred. Any other questions? Adam, I just had one quick question. You touched on this in your staff report, but it looks like MMWD has backed off and no longer thinks that they're going to need to ban new water hookups. Is that correct?
Well, that's what their staff report had said at the last meeting. So I think they're going to take this up for consideration. Actually, I think they're doing that this evening. I, I don't know whether, you know, I was just basing that off of the information that we had in the urban water management plan and what staff had said in that regard. So it's not, I don't, I don't, I don't want to say for certain that they're not going to.
But it's, was it then the case that there's, their staff recommendation, so to speak, was that a moratorium was not necessary?
Yeah, I think at this time that was the recommendation.
Okay, great, thank you. Any last questions from council members? And if not, we're going to open this up to public comment. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item?
No, no, nothing. We did not receive any emails for the comments.
Great, thank you. We've got one hand up. So we're going to go to Carl, oh, two hands. We're going to go to Carl, followed by Marla.
Hi, this is Carl. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Maybe you said it before and I apologize, but what is Cordera and other towns' legal liability? Should we fail in this?
Great, thanks, Carl. So how we're going to do this is we'll just go through the public comments and when we bring it back to council, we'll also ask staff to touch on the, the points or questions raised by the public. So we'll, we'll get to that question momentarily. Was there anything else you wanted to say or ask?
Well, I, I just think, you know, for future thinking here for voters and such, a lot of propositions, which is I think a terrible way to make laws, have these hidden unintended consequences. I think people really need to understand what happens when these things come along and they're feel good and we want this housing, we want all these great things and that's all great. Then it comes down to brass tacks, stuff gets shoved down our throats. So I just think, you know, we as voters just need to be more aware of these things.
Good point. Thank you, Carl. We're going to go to Marla next.
Good evening. Adam, thank you. That, that was a really good presentation. First off, I want to say, Leela, I agree with your observations and your commentary. I have, I have two questions. One is, what is going to be the worst case scenario? Should the town not acquiesce to the numbers that are proposed? Second question is, they've given us an outrageous number to, you know, to ascend to knowing full well, we have the issues of the wooey. You know, quarter of the land is underwater, the other is going to. You know, quarter of the land is underwater, the other is going to be experiencing subsidence. So what, if anything, can be done to push back on the MMDW numbers? I've looked at them very carefully in the study in which they say. We do not need a moratorium are based on a study that was done in 2018. That followed a very wet year, 2019 was not so bad. 2020, 21, as we know, is terrible, so. I I saw in the staff report that that's not something that can be raised. But why not? At least to me in the cover letter, we don't have water, we don't have. Places to put places. Can somebody help me with this because I'm still struggling? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Marla. And I'm not seeing any other hands up right now, so we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion, and I'd like to invite Adam to start by just maybe touching on. Those kind of two separate points that were raised in public comment.
Yeah, and I do think, I think one of the unfortunate things about having this. Appeal sort of at this point in time is that we haven't even really gotten into the discussion about where. Housing opportunities do exist in Corder Madera, and that's one of the things I do want to conversation, I think we do need to have and. And can have with our community through a a public process and intend to do that and start that in September, actually, so. There will be a discussion about opportunities for new housing development, even despite the fact that they may be. In places that are constrained by flood zone and whatnot, it, these are sites that. A lot of these sites currently do have development on them today, and it would be sort of a redevelopment proposition, so. That's one thing, and it's unfortunate, we have to sort of, without having that conversation, I think it's clear that these are. Super inflated numbers, so that that's one thing, but certainly there are opportunities out there to consider new housing development. And so we will have that conversation, and I I don't want it to sound like. There's no opportunities out there at all for housing development in Corder Madera. I mean, we, there's challenges certainly, but there's nothing that. Corder Madera hasn't seen before in terms of potential opportunities. So. Secondly, I would say, you know, on the on the water side of it, you know, I, it's hard for us to sort of be the experts in the in the. Water arena here in terms of capacity, that is really the engineers at MMWD, those are the experts. One of the things that they have noted, and we've had discussions with them amongst planning directors. Is that, you know, on a, it is from a, if you are talking about more. Water usage per unit, some of the new development that really this higher density. Sort of the density that when you start talking about apartments or whatnot, they are more efficient in terms of. Water usage than single family homes and whatnot, so. There's other things that they're looking at in terms of how to meet that capacity for growth going forward. And and I would just leave it at that, but that's sort of some of the information we've gleaned from them. Obviously, conservation's critical. But really, they're they're the the best folks to really weigh in on the on the capacity that. That the water district has and accommodating additional growth. And then there are penalties, I don't know if, you know, I'm, there's a, there's a lot of new regulations in the last few years that were put in place by. Well, new state legislation that do start to impose. Real penalties on cities that do not certify a compliant housing element. Which ultimately end up being. There's, there's. Everything from easier legal challenges, I would say. To financial penalties actually being imposed on cities that do not ultimately get a certified and compliant housing element through the state. I don't, I, you know, I don't have the list right in front of me. All I could say is those have been a focus of. Let just recent legislation to start to put some more teeth into this, these laws and the the housing element and the arena requirements. And so. It's, yeah.
Thanks, Adam, and Todd, did you want to jump in?
I just want to say, I think that's it. I mean, again, hey, this is the first time I, as your town manager, have gone through the housing. This is my first time, so, but the way we are approaching this. Is that, you know, our arguments have been clear as day, we're one of the only entities in Marin County in the area that qual met the numbers this last time. We've always done our part as a as a town to meet the housing requirements, and so we have that reputation. Moving forward, we just, we can't meet that mark under the current with our climate adaptation work that we've done, we just know that, and so. As we move forward, you know, we're going to position ourselves for an legal argument if that if it comes, and ultimately, I know it's stacked against us, but. You know, that's what we're doing, we're going to, we've always been clear on, we're going to do our part, this is what we can do, what we can't do and why. Using science and, you know, if they want to help us solve some of our problems and give us multi millions of dollars. To offset these impacts with our adaptation work, then great, then we can come to the table and. In mediation and and work through that to meet those numbers, so. We're setting the stage now not to be victims, but to set the future leaders in this town to make good decisions and give them the tools they need to continue the conversation, but. As we all know, it's, it's, it's just crazy what we're talking about right now. Our town, when we talk to our cohorts, just comparing who's doing what. Our town is more impacted than anyone in this region. I'm really shocked at when I sit back and I look at the work we've done and the science that's already out there. I'm just, I'm concerned, and so that's what we're going to use science and data facts that are out there already. To have this conversation and keep going forward, and I know, you know, in the report, we landed at, you know, 500 units. You know, bring it down from 700 plus to 500, it's an arbitrary number, it's difficult, you know, what we did, we kind of look back at. I don't know if she's on the call, but you know, in talking. You know, to Phyllis on our planning commission was like, look, have a formula to justify a number. And really, we did, we went back to the last cycle that we met, and it was hard, but we met it. We kind of looked at that formula, and the formula was right in the 500 range, and so I think there's some discussion to be had there, but we didn't pick it out of the sky. And we kind of looked at, hey, you know, we were able to do it last time, and that based on a certain criteria, and can we do that again? You can only do that so often in our current situation, based on adaptation work that we've talked about. It's a great report, I really appreciate the work of Adam, great job, and Martha took a lot of the comments that we received. We did share this with some of the people that have provided public comments in the past about this, just to get their feedback. Some of those revisions were made this round, and I've just, I really appreciate staff's work and thoughtfulness, because I think it sets the stage moving forward. It, you know, for, is this appeal going to be approved? It's single digit numbers, right? If you're a betting person, you're not going to bet that we're going to win on this, but we're playing the long game. We're setting the stage as we go, and again, as Adam said, we haven't even started the process, because we can do some really. Really great housing work in our community, it's just what is that number? And the last thing is, there's no legal, the legal side, what I'm concerned today, let's just say, with a few years down the road, and we don't meet the element. When you talk about what it just happened at the American Rescue Act, it went through the state to the to the non entitlement local agencies. This would be a situation where we wouldn't see that $2.3 million. This would be one example that this is, this is how they'll reach out and touch us, and it's it's our reality, so we need to think about that as well. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, no worries. Thank you guys both for thoroughly answering those questions from the public. We'll go now to council members for any comments on this, and if not, we'll take a motion, and we'll start with Bob.
Yeah, if I can add a little historical perspective to maybe answer Marla's question and Carl's. I got on the council in 2007, so this is my third housing element, and when I got on. I was told by staff, and staff can check this, the town has some history here, we were actually sued in the early 2000s for not having a certified housing element by. Local pro bono housing groups. Who, by the way, of course, have pro bono lawyers, and the town ended up spending $400,000 in legal fees. They lost because they were in violation of state law, and we ended up building San Clemente Place as a way to settle the case. So my understanding is that's still what happens if we're in violation of not having a certified housing housing element. And I'm going to be looking at notes here because I took some notes before I started this. We need to solve affordable housing in Marin County in California, no question about it. But we're doing our part, we're doing it, we have demonstrated this, and we've done it. In very meaningful ways, I looked up some stats this afternoon. Only 6% of California cities and counties are on track to meet their arena goals in this cycle. We're one of those towns, we added 75 low and moderate income units in this last cycle. We just approved Project Home Key, we did it quickly, we did it easily, we did it joyfully, I mean, and it's been great. So we are doing everything we are doing to make this work, but what that does is it makes it harder for us to meet Rena targets in the future, because we're using up properties. In order to make things happen. Yet despite all of our success, we've gotten the highest growth rate in the Bay Area, which is just crazy, that makes no sense. And having been through this cycle a couple of times, I can also tell you, we've already used up a lot of the easy rezoning options. Many of you may not know this, we've rezoned the village, we have rezoned the town center to add units on second floors already. And that is something, you know, that's one of the ways you can get by this is by zoning. So it's only going to get worse, by the way, in the future. There's two bills in the state legislature right now, I'm starting to get more involved in this again. SB 9 allows developers to actually split single family homes into two distinct parcels. Put one home and two ADUs on each lot by right. It doesn't matter what the local laws say, and that turns a single family home into a sixplex, okay? That no hearings, no SEQA, no local restrictions, no nothing, that's in the state legislature right now. As is SB 10, which will allow 14 unit apartment buildings in single family neighborhoods, no hearings, no SEQA. One of the things I've asked staff to evaluate is joining a group called California Cities for Local Control. It was started in Southern California, and their mission is to manage this process. By not allowing the state legislator to mandate changes to our cities and lose local control, because that's what this is about. The state is taking over, and we're losing local control. There's also a group that is proposing a constitutional amendment in the state of California that will affirm local control of zoning. When it comes to local laws over state laws, and I think we should look at that as well. I am all for changing this to a minimum 500 units, I'd go even lower, I'd go to 400 units. We may somehow be able to get there, it's probably going to get rejected by A bag, we need to acknowledge it, that's why Nevada was not doing it, because Pat. Eckler knows, has been through this as well with me for years. A bag is an unelected political agency, right? I was the rep for two years, I went to all the meetings, and. It was, for lack of a better word, ridiculous as an organization, and it led me to recommend the town leave a bag, which we did. Now, that doesn't stop us from complying, but it does keep us from paying membership fees. But I do think we should lower this, absolutely, I'd go to 400 and try our best to see what we need to do, because this. Is not getting, I don't, I don't know how we get 400 more units in town, it's going to be incredibly difficult, given all the constraints we have environment. Okay, sorry for the long comment, but I just wanted to provide some answers in history on all this. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob, that was very helpful. Let's go to Charles.
Yeah, so we're just appealing numbers, but are we actually giving numbers that we want them to target preliminary? And then when we do do the housing element and do the public process, and we actually identify what would be acceptable. To the public and what we as a town feel is safe and and we can support. Do you is is then you can present that element, but if it doesn't meet their numbers, is it noncompliant or you tap? Can you try to convince them? Is there an argument? No, it's just like you have to meet those numbers, so.
This is the, this is the time to make the argument.
50 story building or something, right? Like, you know. So, yeah, but ultimately, like, it could be so ridiculous that even developers aren't going to find it economically feasible, right? And then therefore, you can make a compliant housing element, and even if you lose control over it, that zoning. Would never get built because nobody's going to build a bunch of, you know, huge, huge, you know, eight story buildings out on the wetlands, right? So. It's just, you know, some of this is that it is like Todd said, right? I think we're preparing ourselves to have a reasonable discussion, but we might not be dealing with a reasonable bureaucracy, right? And so therefore, we just need to be prepared and and keep doing what we've always done, which is, you know, try to make our community better, so.
Thank you, Charles. Any other comments from council members? Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, I support the letter, I think we need to move forward with it. To me, this is almost like a phase one to see what A bag comes back with through that appeal process. Which could, I think, Todd, you kind of mentioned down the road, potentially lead to legal issues against that potentially. I think one thing I really like about the letter, though, Adam, thanks to you and other public members that put it together and staff. Is that it's totally well laid out, and it's very methodical, and it's totally supportive. Now, whether that helps on the A bag side, I'm not sure, because I don't think anybody has insight into their workings. But I just think from a letter standpoint, again, the way it's laid out, it's just really well laid out. One thing Bob had mentioned, which I'll ask Adam, you, do you, and it may be. I want to say a game, you know, is it better to go to 400 units versus 500? And again, it's could be a complete crap shoot, I guess, with the way A bag thinks.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's a. I I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, and I don't, I, I think it's really, that's why it's up for discussion amongst.
Yeah, can we do it?
It says that based on our local conditions, which are so unique, if A bag accepts that those do. Create requirements that will do further research and basically come up with a very precise amount of number of units. Based on their criteria that we think we could support within the community, and then allow them to basically give us more time to figure it out and give a proposal to them. That is on that reasonable quality, right? I know A bag, my fear is that A bag, like, you're, you're like, they have these checkboxes of appeals, and there's no kind of line items where you can be like. You know, we really want to help. Yeah, I think it, I think it's a balance just between how much. Really, this is, I mean, we're making the argument, I I don't know. If further research and trying to come up with a methodology on our own that's going to sort of work again. Going through that six month, five month process that I. Think we need to do with our community to sort of identify those housing sites and come to a realistic development potential, it's going to take. Time, obviously, that's not aligning with the deadlines for the appeal, so I don't see how we do that in advance, and I wouldn't want to do that. In advance of actually doing that with through the community process. Because it it makes a bunch of assumptions that what's realistic and what is adequate and what works, you know. I do, you know, so you could take the the line of just nothing should be allowed in the FEMA floodplain, I think. And that would sort of make a much lower number, obviously, they think. There's only, or or in the wooey, and just say you can have ADUs in these white areas, and that's about it, you know, and and. That's one sort of easy methodology that we could come up with, but I think realistically, I was, you know, there's the other way of. Hey, we over, we're over on the lot, this arena cycle, that should really be counted, you know, and reduce it by a couple hundred units. The reality is, you know, I don't think if you go down to 100 to 200 units. I have a hard time believing that that's going to be accepted, and and those units shifted to another community. But, you know, it's, it's sort of a. It's in in some ways, and I hate to say it, it's sort of like what feels and looks okay to our. Our community in terms of what we're asking for and what we're requesting. It's, I don't think there's a real scientific answer there. I think we will get there, I think we will get there, though, you know, just to answer some of the questions that I've heard in comments, we will get there at some point. Probably by the early part of next year, 2022.
So Adam, do you think real, and again, I know you don't know, it's probably loaded question, do you think like 400 would be a realistic number?
Yeah.
I mean, I think you kind of said.
I think it's fine to, I think it's fine to put for, I, I mean, I've seen, I've looked at some other appeals that other communities have put in place, so there is one. In Southern California that, you know, it was more like an 80% reduction. They had claimed, though, that they were in a dam inundation area, and the dam was. Had been basically earmarked to potentially fail, and and why are we putting more? Units in there, and they argued for a huge reduction in their number, and then others. You know, I think it was another community in Southern California. you know, I think it was another community in Southern California. I'm trying to remember the name of it, but it was, they had 95% of their town, of their community was in the very high fire hazard severity zone, and yet they only asked for a reduction of like 100, you know, of maybe 15% of the arena. So I didn't see a real. You know, there, there's, I'll put it this way. I, I don't think having a clear-cut methodology is going, is the way that they're going to look at this in terms of like a precise way of calculating the number of units that we should be reduced by is, is going to convince them. That's just my feeling, you know, based on what I know of how, how others have attempted the appeal processor.
Okay. And then just one last comment. I really like that you put in, I think it's there or one that shows the map because I think that tells the whole picture and the whole story right there, just without anything else, just looking at that, it tells the whole story. So, I think, good job. Thanks.
Thanks. Great. Thanks, Fred. Any other comments from council members? Yeah, Leela. And then Bob, we can go back to you if you have something else to say.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to say I do support the letter. I think that our unique environmental concerns are worth bringing to their attention, just making sure that it's, it's part of the calculation. I, I, you know, looking at the table, wanting your letter that talks about what Corredman Dara has done in the last element, I think is great. And I want to point out that it looks like Project Home Key and Tam Ridge were key parts of getting us to make those numbers. And, you know, some of those were hard for the community in the beginning, you know, so I, I, I think that it will be difficult, whatever the number is. And as much as I'm proud of what Corredman Dara has done, I do think we want to acknowledge the historical context here. You know, if my family had tried to buy the house that I live in 30 or 40 years ago, they wouldn't have been allowed to because nonwives were not allowed to buy here. So I think we need to just be mindful of the history there and the fact that even more in county in general and in Corredman Dara, there's work to do to kind of make up for exclusion that happened in the past.
Great point. Thank you, Leela. Bob, I wasn't sure if I saw your hand again.
Yeah, I was just going to say, answer to Fred. I would not expect a logical answer out of A-Bag as to how they got the numbers or how we had. We actually had them come to meetings for the town council after our for the site, this, the previous cycle, because there was another plan where we had 400 homes. And we asked them to explain it in the meeting and they couldn't. And then we asked them to explain how we had gotten 220 in the previous meeting, and this guy said, well, that was a mistake. And we asked him to explain that further and he couldn't explain it. So I, I'm it's just the way they work. It's a really bureaucratic organization. It's non, none of these people are elected. Don't expect cogent, sane answers. Sorry. I'm a little cynical at this point, to say the least.
Thank you, Bob. Well, I'll just say, you know, I think I agree with, with all the comments that were raised, and especially I think Charles and Bob hit on, you know, the, the fact that I think a lot, there's a lot about this process that is, I think, sort of ridiculous on its face from the methodology to the numbers as they came out. And I think Charles raised a really good point that, you know, the process seems almost divorced from reality in the sense that like, we could zone for a million units if we wanted to. They're not going to get built. And so, you know, in a way, it seems like the Rena numbers are almost like monopoly money, right? It's like funny money. It's meaningless. And, but I do think it's important that we push back to the extent that, you know, bending over backwards to comply would have the effect of cramming housing, especially, you know, affordable housing into flood and fire zones. I just don't think that's responsible. I don't think it's fair. I'm definitely sensitive to the points that Leela raised. I, you know, I have said this in the past. I'm not anti-growth, not anti-housing at all, but I just don't think that disaster zones are the place to be cramming housing. And I, I just wanted to thank Adam and his staff for putting together what I think is a really, even if it's ultimately rejected out of hand, I think a really well-thought-out and logical appeal letter, and you guys put this together on really short notice. So thank you. And with that, we'll take any last comments and if not a motion on this letter. And yeah, if there are no other comments, would somebody like to make a, oh, Adam, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just real quick and not to, I, I want to, I think there are a couple of spots where I was in looking over this again myself, just having been away last week. Coming back to it, I would, I think there were some areas where we could add a little bit more, elaborate a little bit more on sort of the, the problem with the fact that the small lot sizes are what's remaining in these areas that are not in either of the risk zones. And there are some reasons that it requires land assemblage and it requires displacing already occupied residential homes and stuff like that, which is not really what we've seen in the past in terms of development practice. So I could add a little bit more there, and, and I think there is also some additional language regarding the woo-ee that I know that we're also sort of trying to, at this point, sort of get the woo-ee recognized as a very high-fire hazard severity zone through a process with the state. And so adding those things may just be a little bit more information that might be helpful.
Great, thank you. And with that, would any council members like to make a motion to authorize submission of this appeal letter? Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we go ahead and submit the letter with the two changes or enhancements that Adam mentioned and that we lower it down to 400 units.
I'll second that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan.
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cesar.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Adam and Todd, for your help on this. That brings us to item 6B, which is authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute a contract for engineering, environmental, and public outreach for the Paradise Drive Multimodal and Climate Adaptation Improvements, and I'll turn it over to staff.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Beckman and council members. I'm going to share a screen here and go through a short presentation. All right. So this is for the Paradise Drive Multimodal and Climate Adaptation Improvements Project. This is to initiate design, environmental, and public outreach services with BKF Engineers. The contract amount is $422,000 and change being considered. So this is some grant funds that we've had in the coffers for quite some time. They were Measure A Safe Pathways funding from TAM back in 2010. The original projects here are shown in green, which was from Westward Drive to up, up and away or up in circle. And as originally scoped, it was identified as a Class 1 bike path. And as part of our recent work, you know, we're doing a couple of things. One, we're stretching the limits. We think it makes sense to analyze the whole corridor. Also, in light of what we've learned recently about our climate adaptation assessment and the vulnerabilities that it's raised for us, you know, this section of roadway, which not only serves the town of Corredman Dara, it serves some of our neighboring jurisdictions, but it is vulnerable to future sea level rise. And, you know, given a roadway typically has a service life of 25 years or more, it made sense to give that some consideration before investing, you know, seven, seven figures and implementing construction project. So those three factors initially led to staff, you know, proposing this to be sea level rise to be considered. And then separately, you know, in recent years, we have heard from a handful of stakeholders, you know, whether it be the schools and how they queue and, and vehicles move into their properties and often use the shoulders that are out there for some level of queuing and staging. We've also heard from folks at Marin County Parks and Open Space about some of their parking needs to, you know, provide that recreational access to Ring Mountain. And then obviously we have the, you know, the kids trying to go to school. We have the recreational cyclists. We have the environmental folks. And, you know, obviously, we have emergency access, which we all rely on as one of our kind of major collector roads. And so that led us to include in this contract what we thought was a robust community engagement process. So as currently proposed in this contract, you know, we have two additional meetings with our bike BPAC committee, two with our flood board, three, so, you know, dedicated public workshops, one standalone meeting with the schools, and at least one more meeting with council to really iron out some of these kind of goals and constraints and challenges. I think if you drive out there now, it, it seems like there is ample width and, and, you know, a very simple project or at least a, you know, somewhat simple project. But as you get into it, you know, you get into all of these factors and turning movements and environmental constraints and the required buffers and things you need for some of these multimodal facilities, and you, you run out of with quite quickly. So just talking a little bit about that and, and want to also preface that, you know, staff is fully open to, you know, whatever outcome comes out a result of this, you know, whether it be a class one path or whether it be something different, we just think that it's appropriate to get everyone in the same room, all the stakeholders, and just have a discussion and really kind of document and make sure we're, we're all have the same goals and we're able to optimize it as best we can. But this is the section here in front of Ring Mountain Trailhead. And so, you know, on the southbound side, it, it might seem like a very simple location to put a Class 1 bike path. And the minimum width is eight feet for a bike path of that type plus two-foot buffers, and then you need some sort of additional separation between vehicles. And so that now you're, you know, if you can see here, you're really pushing the whole roadway over. And not only that, as you have queuing for the schools potentially, I've heard they have perhaps a desire for a dedicated turnpocket. Then you could have, you know, you can have eliminated parking on the south side for those going to Ring Mountain Trailhead, and you're putting them now onto the north side, and how do you cross them over? I'm not saying we won't come up with a solution. I just, I think we really need to kind of start fresh and just have that dialogue establish the goals and kind of work as a team collaboratively, as a community to kind of move something forward. And so that's, you know, part of the reason why we've, I guess, adjusted the discussion of scope, but by all means, all the alternatives are on the table and we want to look at them further. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Great. Thank you very much, RJ. We will take questions from council members for staff. And I'm just going to scroll through my, RJ, would you mind stopping your screen share? Thank you. All right. Any questions for staff on this item? And if not, oh, Leela.
Sorry, I'm just wondering if you can just clarify, like, what exactly we'd be approving tonight? Because I know you're not actually doing anything yet. I mean, you're not building a road yet, right? Or you're not making those decisions yet. So if you can, can you just clarify what, what exactly this would be authorizing tonight?
Yeah, so, you know, the ultimate end of this contract would be a bid set of plans that could then, you know, go to the contracting community for pricing and whatnot. But there's a lot of steps along the way. There's the environmental analysis. There's the preliminary engineering. There's community outreach. Then we move into design and environmental compliance and potentially permitting. So all of those things will then, yes, lead to a set of plans that could be bid for construction.
Great. Thank you, Leela. Any other questions from council members on this? And if not, we're going to turn this over to the public. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org, and we will start with Maureen.
Am I on?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. My name is Maureen Gaffney, and I am currently the Acting Executive Director for the Marin County Bicycle Coalition. And that is just because the, the real executive director is out on a bit of family leave, so I'm just helping out. My previous position was as the San Francisco Bay Trail Planner for MTC and A-Bag for about 16 years, and I was the planner for Marin and other North Bay Counties. And I just wanted to, I was pretty surprised to see this coming up as a potential Class 2, as an extension of the existing multi-use path has been the plan here for many, many years. And, you know, construction of this project, it seems like it has been six months out for about six years. You know, those aren't exact numbers, but, but surely it has been on the cusp of construction for a very long time. And a Class 1 multi-use path, which is a bicycle and pedestrian path on this part of Paradise Drive is specifically called for in the Complete Streets checklist. You know, this project on Paradise is specifically called out the Corredman Dara Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan calls for a Class 1 multi-use path here. And I'd like to note that this, this would not be considered complete Bay Trail if it is a Class 2 and, and would also not be eligible for Bay Trail Grant Funds as a Class 2 facility. There are three schools on this corridor, you know, that, that parents are, parents have, had been calling me as the Bay Trail representative and also the Marin County Bicycle Coalition, you know, several times a year with, with phone calls and emails, when is this segment of path going to be completed? Because it is so important for, for parents to feel comfortable allowing their kids to walk or ride their bikes to school. You guys know this is a, a very, you know, a very fast corridor for vehicles. And, you know, the, as RJ mentioned, Measure A funds were allocated to this project and they were allocated for a Class 1 multi-use path. And it, to me, it just was never, was never in question that this was going to be a Class 1 facility. And, you know, I know that much time has passed, but the, the price tag here or two to get not even to construction is, is also kind of, kind of alarming. I understand costs always go up. Thank you so much for hearing my comments this evening.
Great. Thank you very much. And I'm not seeing any other hands up right now. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments on this item? And we've just gotten several hands that went up. So while you're checking the emails, we're going to
Just to answer your question, we did receive four emailed public comments. Two of those commentators currently have their hands raised, so.
Perfect. So we'll read any email comments afterwards. Great. Okay, thanks. So we're going to go to David next, followed by Gene and then Cheryl.
Am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So I think most of my comments are now part of the public record, and so I won't repeat myself except to say, you know, really going back to 2008, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Safe Routes to Schools, every group that's had a public discussion about the continuation of a safe bicycle pedestrian facility from Westward to Robin Drive has always been about a grade-separated multi-use path that would safely get children and families and novice cyclists to the town's edge from the bayside connected to the rest of the town. And so, you know, the, the Exhibit A that was attached really came as quite a shock to many of us because it really represents a preliminary, very preliminary. I understand, you know, this, this is not set in stone. But really, the result of that type of path, Class 2 for anybody that doesn't know, means, you know, you'd still be expecting people and bicycles to ride in the roadway with vehicles that travel 40, 45, and sometimes 50 miles an hour. This would not result, that type of, of of design would not result in a single additional student riding their bikes to MCDS or Montessori or connecting all of those citizens on the bayside that really deserve the very safest and best bicycle pedestrian facilities to connect them to That really deserve the very safest and best bicycle pedestrian facilities to connect them to Nugget. To connect them to the Bay Trail, to connect them to the Village, to to connect them to Warham, the Ferry. Facility and beyond. So I appreciate everybody's response. Telling us, reminding us that this is very preliminary, but. Absent a continuation of a grade separated class one path from westward. In favor of queuing for MCDS or parking needs for Ring Mountain. Would be a nonstarter for me and I will certainly be looking for. Better design options that can accommodate everyone's needs. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, David. We're going to go to Gene next, followed by Cheryl.
Good evening. Thank you so much, council. First of all, I wanted to commend RJ and Public Works for adding sea level rise to look at this project. It's really, I think, very. Apropos and important, especially very helpful. The maps with the blue color of where the sea level rise will impact this. Perhaps it gives us an opportunity to rethink the environmental discussion on this. However, I don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater or with the sea level rises, it may be because the really precious. Item here that is funded and that we've been talking about for many years, at least six in my memory, as Maureen said. Is the class one multi use path. And the reason for this is because. 62% of our population will not share the road with a car with a class two striped lane. On a high speed road like this. They will not. They'll just leave the bike in the garage. And Cortimera is looking very wisely at climate change. I think we fight climate change by enabling and encouraging people to bike more often. And that's what a class one path does. It enables, this is the the interested but concerned as the federal government. Defines these 62% of our population. So the people that are going to ride in a class two lane on a fast street. They're already riding on this street. So I don't think we're going to add anybody by putting in class two lanes. So. What I'm hearing is they're sort of like, oh, well, let's do class two lanes instead, but that's really not the point. So I would like to ask council to direct staff to specify that a class one multi use path. Be considered along with the option they've suggested in every public meeting. So everybody gets a chance to look at who really. Will benefit. How will the town benefit from this project? The other thing I'd like to see is that you change the scope of work on greenhouse gases. To look at greenhouse gas reduction. We need to cut car emissions drastically. Cal Bike says by as much as 45% by 2030, if we want to avert climate disaster and. The ITDP, the Institute for Transportation Development Policy has done excellent work on the amount biking reduces greenhouse gases. So I was really stunned to see the scope say there will be no greenhouse gas changes from this project. So. Would you please include direction to staff to look at greenhouse gas reductions from building? The multi use path versus the class two. And thank you so much for your work.
Great. Thank you very much, Gene. And we're going to go to Cheryl next.
Good evening, council. I want to thank Public Works for taking this project on. I've been on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for. Probably eight years or so, and I've always heard about this project. Well, it's very complicated. It's very complicated. And it didn't seem to be moving anywhere. So I'm really thank you, RJ, for picking up the ball on this. It looks like you've been getting a little heat with the staff report and sorry about that, but the. You know, it was confusing because we'd all been talking about. Class one and then all of a sudden we see class two. So I think what it. I would guess that a class one multi user path would be more expensive, maybe more complicated to. Implement, but it really needs to be compared or if the the town. Needs to make an informed decision on what option to take. And so we need to look at both of those options, just like in a usual EIR. Report, you you look at no build and then option one and option two and so on. So. I, as Jean said, we need to have those options present in all the workshops and. I think the suggestion about looking at greenhouse gases is also very important. Those autos queuing up for the schools. Some of them may, if they're, you know, more modern vehicles, their. Motors stop and they're not emitting emissions, but many of them probably are just idling there and emitting emissions. So if we can get a. A safe option here that kids can use to get to school, we may even reduce greenhouse gases. So I hope we can. I'm glad the town is taking this up and I hope we can really look at the options completely. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Cheryl. And there are no other hands up at this time. So I'll ask Rebecca to go ahead and read. The first three minutes of any emailed public comments from folks who have not had a chance to speak in person here tonight.
Thank you, Rebecca. And yes, there is one remaining email that I will read, but I also wanted to point out to the council and the public that the. Emailed public comments that were received are part of the record on the town's website linked on the agenda. Okay. Dear Mayor Beckman and members of the town council, this this email is from Warren Wells from the Marin County Bicycle Coalition. I am writing to express my sincere concern about the town's staff recommendation to downgrade the planned class one separated multi use pathway to paint only in street. Class two bike lanes on Paradise Drive between Restward Drive and Robin Drive. As currently written, the scope of work for BKF Engineering recommends a configuration inconsistent. With the town's approved bicycle pedestrian plan. Importantly, the proposed paint only lanes fail to provide a safe. All ages and abilities connection to the two schools on Paradise Drive. Children trying to reach school have a safe separated path as far east as Westward Drive. With more planned between Prince Royal Drive and Harbor Drive. Rather than allowing them to continue on a comfortable path, they would be unceremoniously dumped onto a paint only lane with fast moving traffic for the. Last quarter mile to school. Many Marin parents drive their children to school despite living close by because they do not feel that the children can walk or bike to school safely. This project constructed as proposed would do nothing to change that. A climate adaptation project such as this should help people travel in low or zero GHG modes. Rather than discouraging it. Lastly, the segment is part of the San Francisco Bay Trail. If it were to continue as a multi use path. It could be eligible for construction funding from Bay Trail. As a paint only bike lane, it would not be. MCBC urges the council to request that staff reconsider the recommendation for paint only bike lanes and reinstate the originally planned separated multi use path. Sincerely, Warren Wells, Policy and Planning Director.
Great. Thank you very much, Rebecca. And we do not have any other hands up. So we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. And I'd just like to invite. Todd and RJ to to start by just touching on any points they may want to.
Yeah, I'll start off, Mr. Mayor and RJ, feel free to please jump in. I'll just say this, this is a, this is confusing and I appreciate. The council's question of what exactly are you asking us tonight? And and this isn't really a discussion whether it should be a class one or class two project. Process is everything. And so if staff were to run this process, try to figure out what yes look like for for this multiple. Multiple things to consider on this project. We would get stuck in Manisha and we wouldn't get a project to you in the next year. We have grant monies available for adaptation and this improvement, this is a seven figure project. We're committed to it. But we need to get the right project to council. And so process like us, every commenter tonight spoke to is important. And so what we're asking is for you to approve this contract. So we can have the right team to do this process. Go back to BPAC, have workshops, get all the stakeholders. I know a number of people mentioned the schools. I'll just share with you, one of the issues with the stakeholders is the schools. They want parking queuing along Paradise Drive. If this is going to be a class one, you cannot have parking along Paradise Drive. If you go out another 10 feet, you're an environmental, which adds another potential six to seven figures to a project. There's a lot of moving factors and so RJ, and it's confusing, was trying to get a just. Here's where we know, yes, is a class two. We know we can do that. We know it meets the grant criteria. We want to bring this to you to prove a contract to again authorize Public Works Director to execute a contract. For engineering, environmental, which this will absolutely be a bit environmental is going to be big on this one, folks. I'm just telling you it's because what 10 feet matters here. And public outreach services, public outreach services, because we're going to talk about with the stakeholders. Look. If it's class one, we're losing queuing and parking, which slows down traffic, which adds safety to the area. Staff absolutely supports that in class one. But it impacts. And so we need someone to help us with this conversation, kind of like we talked about adaptation. We need the right team to come in and help us talk about this. So staff 100%. Supports everything we've heard tonight. We support class one. We just need to understand. The cost and effect to what that means. And the schools are one of the big stakeholders. It's not a. It's not as easy as it sounds. There's going to be pushback and the pushback will actually come from the school, believe it or not. Not to say it's at the end of the day, we're not doing class one, but that's why we're asking you to bring this contract now. To protect over $400,000 worth of worth of grant funds and to get the right process so we can get something we're all happy with and bring it back to council. For a decision. So I think we're all saying the same thing regarding the greenhouse gases. That's the Climate Action Plan. That's what we evaluate every two years. We just went through it now. That's that's part of, you know, I think that's a great conversation as we think about things. You know, we want people to walk and bike. That's what the Climate Act Action Plan focuses on. So that's, I think we're talking two different things here. But we are motivated. We know the history of the conversation of this area. Again, this is a seven figure. Project that RJ and the team and the council has put on our three year horizon to get it done. And in order to get it done the right way, we need someone to help us as you hear, as you've heard from our speakers. So. This, we're not approving a project, you're proving a contract to help us. Develop the right project and we all recognize that what, you know, the. Just it being a class two without having the right process is not what we're trying to do. And so I'm on the record as a town manager stating that. And you can hold me accountable to that. We're just, we're focused on processor.
Great. Thank you very much. RJ, did you want to jump in with anything?
Yeah, just a couple of clarifications. And so yeah, the overall contract is for $422,000. We have about 244,000 in these. Safe pathway funds. There's been a little bit spent over time, but not much. So the balance is about $163,000 from local sales. Tax or you know, measure of sales tax. And then separately, given, you know, these. Two potential components, you know, these multimodal improvements, given the adaptation, potential enhancements, you know, I think this has a lot of. Good things to make it competitive for for a future grant for construction. It, you know, it's not just self-serving the town of Cortimera. It serves. Unincorporated Marin, it serves Tiburon, these other jurisdictions. It's a, it's a major regional route. So. You know, I can't make any guarantees on that, but you know, it is a seven figure project, but I think one that would compete well, you know, in the future.
Great. Well, thank you guys both. That was really some some helpful clarifying information and we'll go now to any other questions or comments from council members. Yeah, Charles.
Yeah. So thanks for the clarification, staff. And Todd, thanks for talking about some of the stakeholder issues. Ultimately. I also would like to go on record that I hope it's a class one, you know, and could qualify us for Bay Trail funds and that type of thing. I think with our own local. Public schools, we also don't provide drop off at in my neighborhood and the children walk from a farther distance. So perhaps instead of compacting that very sensitive area, there might be somewhere else where they could. We could look at and stuff in the future, right? But that's stakeholder stuff. And you know, we're not quite there yet, but things to think about. I think there's some really eloquent. Solutions. So I'm happy to bring on who RJ has. Assigned and and get the grant dollars that we already have to help us as a community figure it out. So I can definitely prove it.
Great. Thanks, Charles. Let's go to Bob next, who is also the chair of our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Yes, and I spoke to RJ and Todd extensively about this today after we got the emails. And to clarify, and I think this is fine. This is the way we need to approve it. Let's take advantage of the grant money. We're going to look at all the options. It's going to take some time. We're going to have a lot of meetings about it. It's going to take a while. We're going to figure it out, but we're going to come out with the best option. And that's all we're trying to get approved tonight is the ability to move forward and plan this out the correct way. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Bob. We'll go to Fred.
Yeah, I think with the comments between Todd, RJ and Bob, I would feel comfortable approving this and moving it moving in that direction. I do have a question for RJ. What's the timings we set people's expectations on the public engagement part of it? Are we looking at six months down the road? And again, it's just to kind of set people expectations. So I know it won't be next month or anything like that. But if you just have a rough timeline.
Yeah, we would plan on establishing our first workshop or public engagement event this fall. That would give the consultant team time to do some of that surveying, some of that environmental kind of initial legwork, a little preliminary engineering and. So yeah, you know, three to. Three to five, three to four months, we'll be back for for an official event.
Okay. All right. Thanks. And again, I can support this.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Any other comments from council members? And if not, yeah, I'll just say I think I'm happy to support this understanding very clearly from staff now that we're going into this, all options fully on the table. So thank you guys for clarifying that. Would anybody like to make a motion? Yeah, Bob.
Uh, yeah, I would move that we provide the authorization as requested.
Great. Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Yeah, Fred. Great. Thank you. And Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
That's number Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Monken?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Marcus Cisa?
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you to the engaged members of the public who helped us out with this. And that brings us to item 6C, which is consideration and possible adoption of resolution number 312021. Approving the Lower Redwood Avenue and Edison Avenue Underground Utility District. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Great. Thank you. I'm gonna share screen once again. So. This, yes, consideration of the Lower Redwood Avenue and Edison Avenue Undergrounding District. This is tied to the Rule 28 program, which is the kind of primary. Avenue which jurisdictions go about moving forward undergrounding districts. So. The California Public Utility Commission requires electrical companies to. Set aside funds for jurisdictions to fund eligible projects. And so what makes a project eligible is these three criteria. It will avoid or eliminate any unusually heavy concentration of overhead electrical facilities. Is extends, it's in a right away extensively used by the general public and carries a heavy volume of pedestrian or vehicles. And where the street or right away joins or passes through a civic area, public recreation area or unusual scenic interest to the general public. Separately. We've heard about some possible reform amongst the Rule 28 program. And currently town of Cortimera does not have an active project. And so. Some of the updates, I guess, on the on the positive side from my vantage point are potentially expanded eligibility considerations to look at things that, you know, could touch on wildfire risk. So if it's in a tier two or tier three area of the state's high fire threat district. And then separately looking at, does the location serve as an egress ingress or designated as an evacuation route by local or state agencies? So I see that potential. Area reform as as positive. Where there've been considerations is on the reduction side also in sunsetting the program altogether. And that decision came before the CPUC earlier this month and they decided not to sunset it at this time. However, they are going to stop allocating these annual work credits at the end of 2022. And furthermore, the word at this time and some of the other language in the report. Provide uncertainty as to how long this program will be out there and eligible. And these are projects that take multiple years to implement. And so staff felt. It was appropriate to. Start, you know, working towards something. So and part of this came about as part of all our, all of our work on the climate adaptation assessment. You know, there was a lot of discussion about now undergrounding as a potential strategy for wildfire risk and. And really this kind of threat of this program going away, you know, kind of led staff to believe that it's, it's, you know, prudent that we do what we can to, to activate a district. Look at our infrastructure and kind of try to figure out what would be the best project. I know that climate adaptation assessment also talked about a feasibility study, which is still ongoing. But we felt just kind of given these kind of key points, it didn't make sense to kind of just wait on the sidelines. So we've looked at our projects and it's part of the climate adaptation assessment. You know, one of the highlighted issues is Christmas Tree Hill. And it's really only has that main point of ingress and egress for, for vehicles. And that's at the bottom, right there at, you know, Magnolia Corredera Avenue and, and Tamil Pius and Redwood. And so, you know, that in, in light, and also the, the staff proposal from the CPUC where it talked about these ingress egress routes. And then, you know, what happens if, you know, electrical power line falls, you know, well, you know, all of a sudden you have all these people on the hill that, that can't get away. So here's the, the kind of obvious exhibit, you know, if it falls there, that's, that's the only major artery off. And so for that period of time, while that's being cleared, you know, people can't get out. Separately, you know, we looked further up the hill, you know, what, what, how far do we need to expand this district to have, you know, those redundant routes? And so that's why this kind of Y-shaped district came about is let's make sure we have some redundancy in our system. And so we looked at both the Redwood side. And then alternatively, if you were to have a, a down power line on this side, you would be able to traverse the same but opposite direction. So that's kind of about the reasoning and how we came about this proposed district. It's about a thousand lineal feet of undergrounding. But again, it's, it's in one of the kind of key areas at the base of the hill that would be beneficial for overall evacuation route and emergency services. And with that, I'll open it up for comments or questions. Todd.
And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, I really appreciate RJ, you know, listening to the discussion of staff, the council and the community through the adaptation process. This isn't the end all be all, it's the start. It's, it's something that we identified with our current funding without, you know, the town spending an exorbitant amount of funds. Our community members, you know, spending funds of their own for assessments on their properties. This is money that we have, rule 28 money that we want to secure and, and really hit our number one priority. Side by side with this, as RJ talked about, we're doing an evaluation now. We have Efren Glass, who is actually recommended to us by some of our key stakeholders up on the Christmas Tree Hill, who is really, we just got the first release of, of public information. We requested a PG&E basically looking at their infrastructure, their decision-making process for evaluating shortcomings within their system. So using their own process and their own information to evaluate then and the overlay of Corredera, the whole Wui, Christmas Tree Hill, Chapman Park, East Corredera, our three major neighborhood networks. In evaluating PG&E's network, their own decision-making, and then identifying projects specifically and prioritizing them, bringing it back to the community and council and really pushing PG&E to follow their own guidelines for undergrounding projects. And so it's two steps, there's two things going on side by side. So I just want the community and council to understand this isn't like what we're at the end all be all for us where, hey, you need to go up another thousand feet. We're waiting for PG&E, you know, this was an opportunity right away that RJ just felt like as our public works director saying, hey, look, let's be aggressive, we need to do this, this is the number one priority and let's secure these funds now and start our process while we wait for this data. Let's not stay, you know, kind of sit on our hands, so to speak. And so thank you RJ for that. And I hope the community understands what we are and aren't doing here.
Great. Thank you both so much. Do we have any questions from council members on this item? Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, I think you guys did a great job, by the way. And I think the area you picked, it's totally logical. That makes perfect sense. But just for disclosure, did you also look at other potential areas?
Yeah. So as, as part of the climate adaptation assessment process, there was a lot of analysis of evacuation routes. And this was the one that flowed to the top. You know, whether we talk about Chapman Park or, or Granada, you know, they have two, three, maybe even four ingress egress points. You know, Christmas Tree Hill only has one, so right there it's, you know, it's obviously more, more vulnerable for that standpoint. But it doesn't mean that, you know, we're not going to further analyze these, these other Wui areas in our town.
Okay. And then I thought I read, let me know if I'm wrong in the staff report, that as far as PG&E credits after this project, we wouldn't have any more credits with them. We, that would kind of be exhausted.
So we have about, I don't know the exact number, but 340 to 380,000 credits. And those go to, you know, fund the design work, fund the, you know, potentially fund the construction project. These are expensive projects. They're five to $10 million per mile. So, you know, we haven't gotten to a detailed estimate phase, but it's, it's going to hover somewhere around a million dollars. So it won't fund the full thing likely. And we're going to work over the next few months with PG&E to get exact numbers. But it's a glaring need that, you know, I, I think, I think we just got to find a way and, and we can, you know, there's options under the 28 program, how it gets funded. And then that's, I think a discussion for another day, but I think it's an important location for the improvement.
Okay. So just to clarify, the credits that we get doesn't cover the entire cost of the project between engineering and actually doing the construction piece of it, right? So the town make up that difference, I assume.
I, I think that's open-ended and I'll leave that to Todd and others for a future day.
Okay.
And it's all in the strategy, Mr. Vice Mayor. So we're, again, our big, our big push for our ask, we don't know what we're going to ask yet to PG&E, right? Until we look at the, their data, their decision-making process, overlay it to Corredera, and then we're going to prioritize based on our adaptation work and then everything else. And so this is, we know this is going to be a priority area. And so we're going to use the data in the coming months from that report that the council will see to close the gap. And so we have some strategies. I, I don't know if it's appropriate in a public meeting yet, but staff is absolutely preparing that argument.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Any other questions for staff on this? Lila.
Thanks and thanks RJ. I just had questions kind of about the logistics of how this works. Like, are there sort of longer term consequences for the town, you know, especially financially? I guess I just don't know much about what it means. Like, once you bury the lines, does that increase your vulnerability? I don't know, the damage in the case of things like earthquakes? Who bears responsibility for, you know, are there increased repair costs for problems that happen to the lines that are underground? Who bears responsibility for that? What happens at the part where the line, you know, isn't underground anymore and comes up above ground? Is there, I am just sort of curious if you could speak generally to, to the logistics of how it gets done? And if there's any, anything we need to be aware of for that the town might be on the hook for going forward as a result of, of this change?
Yeah. So, you know, obviously the project cost would be an upfront cost that the town would likely partially fund. But this is still PG&E's facility. So they're going to be involved in the design, they're going to be involved in construction, inspecting. And when it's a completed project, they're going to take over maintenance. So on that respect, it's, it's back to being their costs. But I think overall, overall, there are benefits on the, the maintenance side. It's my understanding, it's really the upfront costs that is much higher. And then that's why we don't have, you know, undergrounding everywhere, you know, statewide, nationwide. It's, it's, it is quite a bit more. But once it's in, I think it's a, it's a good product.
Thanks. And I just want to say RJ, I really appreciate, every time you present something, you're so concise and you, you get us the information we need and then you stop talking. And I appreciate, I appreciate your approach.
Lila, I just wanted to answer, when it comes out for earthquakes, they actually slack the line and put it in a sheath. And it's actually like an expansion joint for electrical and plumbing and stuff for buildings and other utilities. So there's ways to deal with it.
Great. Thank you very much, Lila. Any other questions from council? Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, just more, one more. RJ, what's the timing on a project like this?
You know, they take time. I, I think our, I'd have to check in with our, our neighbors in Tiburon. I think they've done a couple recently, but I, they take longer than three years and then maybe more often closer to five. And that's when you have a, you know, a highly motivated and, and fully staffed team. So another reason why we felt it was important to get something going. The other piece that, you know, hadn't fully discussed, but you know, these decisions were all kind of real time here in the last few weeks. And, and when we were looking at the landscape a year or a month or two ago, it, it was, we were thinking that we might lose all $340,000 worth of credits if we didn't act quickly. And so, you know, we, we did what we could to get it forward. And luckily the decision turned out that it's extended, at least, you know, the credits are extended through the end of next year. But we, we still don't know exactly what's going to happen with the program. So again, another reason to have that district and, and kind of move it forward.
I appreciate that you jumped on it like that.
Sorry, got, got a quick question too, or just to kind of comment about some of the other council I've heard is, so if we do the drawings and the bid doesn't come in and we can't fund it with our budget in the town or we can't find grant studies, right? You can always put those to the side and still have the work done and understand what needs to be done in the future. It doesn't mean we have to act on it at the bidding stage because we have to approve the budget. So it's not a commitment for that, right? Or does the, the grant funds don't commit us to actually executing the project? They just grant the money to be able to understand what needs to be done. Is that correct, RJ? There's no timeline or anything?
Yeah, and there'll definitely be checkpoints as we kind of start coordinating with PG&E. And so, you know, that they'll be saying, hey, before we enter this phase, you know, perhaps you're going to use this many credits. And you're likely not going to get, we're not going to fund this aspect. And, and so it's not that we're going to go into this and spend a half million dollars and then not build a project and have to pay it all back. So there'll be a dialogue, we'll, we'll know what we're getting to, getting into at that point.
Great. Thank you guys. Any other questions? I just had one question, RJ. I was just curious, does it make sense not, not understanding how the rule 28 program is in flux? Would it make sense for us for any reason to declare more undergrounding utilities districts in other parts of town where we hope that we might one day be able to extend undergrounding to? Or is that more something that we should, you know, get to, you know, cross the bridge when we get to it?
Well, I think there are other subsets within the rule 20 program. So there are options to take a more active role in funding. And, and I don't, I don't necessarily believe those are going away. But the ones where you actually utilize the credits that are provided by the electrical companies is really the one that's in the most jeopardy.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I was, I guess I was just curious, like, would it make sense for us to lay out districts covering all of the hillside neighborhoods that we would hope to one day, you know, eventually be able to underground if it makes sense and if we can do it? Or should it really be kind of one piece at a time as we, as we get close to being able to initiate those projects? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and I think that's a open discussion once we get the results of this feasibility study.
Oh, good point.
And I think just getting the one kind of out the door. There is other, another piece. Again, I, I mentioned not having an active project. And, and what PG&E started doing is not giving you annual credits if you don't have an active project. So that prevents them from taking those smaller amounts each year. Even if the product isn't moving as, as fast as maybe some would like. So there's multiple benefits to having an active district.
I get it. Thank you. Any other questions from council members before we turn this over to the public? And if not, we're going to open this up for public comment. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And we're going to start with Alexander followed by Maureen.
Hello, we have a few questions here. Question number one is, what's the plan B in case that the PG&E does not approve the 28? What's the status on the study and whether or not we're going to pursue that in case we don't get the funding? Question number two, within the mappings that was highlighted in RJ's plan, are there any out of pocket costs? Like, when can we expect more details on whether or not annual, any of the additional fees will, will have to be paid by the residents? And question number three, there are houses that do connect to the poles that are mapped to be removed on the map. What happens to them? They're, they're not part of the actual mapping, but they do have wires running to them. What's, what happens to them? Like, what, what's the plan? Are there extra fees? Is this going to be covered by the PG&E if it's approved? So a little bit more details on that. So three questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Alexander. And just so everybody knows, we're going to do this like how we've been doing previously. So we'll just go through all the public comments, then we'll bring it back for discussion and ask staff to start us off by just addressing the points that folks raised. We're going to go to Maureen next, followed by Kevin.
Hi, first of all, I want to thank everyone for starting the process of undergrounding on Christmas Tree Hill. You know, we've been look, looking forward to that for many years. And also I think it's very wise to take advantage of that money, the rule 20 money, because that whole situation seems to be pretty uncertain at this point. So, good job, we're so happy. The other thing I want to point out is that, you know, we've had a lot of cost estimates for undergrounding. And a lot of those numbers are very high in the hillside area. But that district that you've picked out, that the Redwood area is pretty flat. I don't think it's going to be as extreme cost as the other areas. But anyway, I just thank you for doing this and we're looking forward to getting the rest of the information on it.
Great. Thank you very much, Maureen. We're going to go to Kevin next, followed by Lisa.
I just want to start by applauding you for taking this initial step. According to Todd, it sounds like this is just the first step and we're waiting for the study. I hope it's just the first step because, you know, really at the top of Christmas Tree Hills where we get the most wind. And we've mentioned it before, but we've had the power lines taken down multiple times just below our house. So, you know, I think the, the top of the hill is also a priority as well as the rest of the hills. So I hope it is just a start. The other question I have for Todd is, earlier we talked about maybe the ability to buy more credits from other towns or municipalities on the cheap when they're not going to use them. I'm just wondering if that's in the works.
Great. Thank you very much, Kevin. We're going to go to Lisa next, followed by Carl.
Hello, I'm Lisa Spangler and I live at 34 Redwood Avenue between Pixley and Willow. And when I saw this notice, I was all excited because we have, we have power lines in just about half of our block between Willow and Pixley. And we have been trying to do, get those lines down for decades because I've, I've lived in Corredera all my life. And so when I looked at the map, I was very disappointed. But I think that we are an egress and ingress street and we go to the public school. Our traffic in the morning and the afternoon is very heavy on the street. We're also near the park. So I think that because of the heavy traffic, the general need for people on this street, for the post office, et cetera, recreation and evacuation is very important. If there's ever any traffic on the main streets, it's through our street for sure. I also want to say that we are concerned about wildfires down here too. In fact, we've almost lost our condominium association insurance because of fire. So getting rid of those wires would be important too. We're not organized because we're just a few parcels that have these wires and we're very flat street. We're not organized like Christmas Tree Hill. So I would ask that you would look at our area as part of that plan. Because those, we've had multiple times when, you know, the, we've had the poles have to be replaced. We have trees that have to be trimmed all the time. And we do have quite a windy corridor here. So I would ask that you would, when you're doing your overview, that you definitely look at our little section. We're, we're not even a mile or half a block. And we would really appreciate that because our neighbors down the street and up the street do not have poles. So we would like it to be uniform. So that's, and I want to thank you for your good work. I'm very impressed by you, Mr. Sooco and you, Mr. Guzman. Thank you. And if you would like, I would be more than willing. Guzman. No, thank you. And if you would like, I would be more than willing to meet you at the town hall to discuss this and show you the area.
Great. Thank you very much, Lisa. We're going to go to Carl next, followed by Matt.
Hi, it's Carl Spursham. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Thank you again. This is a great effort by you all. And Mayor Beckman, I just want to reiterate, in my sense, your question about expanding this potential effort to underground. Christmas Tree Hill is clearly the top priority throughout the town. So I support that completely. But where we are transformers blow on a fairly regular basis. And so I mean, I'll just say I'm kind of jealous. I'd love to see this program be expanded and and work through the town in these kind of conditions. So thanks again, guys. Great job. That's it.
Great. Thank you, Carl. And we're going to go to Matt next.
Good afternoon, Council. Matt Kaufman. I live at three forty Redwood Avenue. First, I want to thank Todd and RJ for really, you know, bringing this forward. We've had many conversations over the past six to eight months about this topic. And I appreciate the council's support in this initiative. The one question I have is if we are going to unearth and essentially bury these lines in this portion. I guess the question is, is how we had discussions with sanitation district number two and the water district to sort of go in on, you know, replacing the infrastructure at the bottom of the hill for those two utilities to, you know, lower the cost overall to the town if there is going to be some costs that need to be covered by the town because we've had water breaks on the hill. We've had other things and it's not, it's in, you know, it's not a secret that the infrastructure is aging for those two utilities as well. So I I think the next step, if, you know, we proceed forward, and I am very hopeful that we will, is that we start to talk to the other utility districts who probably have replacement costs coming up that they're budgeted for and sort of synergistically time them at the same time to get the biggest bang for the buck. But again, thank you, council. Thank you, staff. You guys are doing a great job.
Great. Thank you, Matt. We're going to go to Werner next.
Mute myself. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Hi, Werner Moss. I live at three twelve Summit. I'm up near the top, near Kevin who spoke earlier. And he rightly points out that probably, you know, the most dangerous part of the hill is uphill. We've had lines come down twice at the road at our house and then once on our property, taking out one of our cars. Proving the point that the top of the hill here is, I think, a very dangerous area in terms of winds. And this whole thing with undergrounding, I believe, started because of the, you know, the urban interface, the whole fire issue. Not so much other things having to do with what wires come down where in terms of major streets and such, but we're fire dangerous. But I guess my biggest concern is that the whole thing seems rather kind of useless. Fires are not, most fires are started by other causes. And, you know, cars, house fires, all sorts of other reasons. Very few fires are actually caused by downed power lines. And unless you bury all the power lines in Larkspur and all the surrounding communities, there's nothing during a wildfire that would prevent sparks coming from a fire starting somewhere else and taking out major portions of Cordera. So it's a lot of money spent that I'm not so sure really provides a true strong, even partial solution to the issues. I think we're opening a can of worms with all the other things that could be affected by going underground. Some Matt, Matt, I think it was, just brought up the whole issue of water and sewer and other costs. Going underground is not just as simple as it sounds. Another thing that I found very interesting in the conversation tonight is the statement that this is the only way out of Christmas Tree Hill. It's not. We can, we can get out through Marina Vista and go down through Larkspur. We have, we have an alternative way of getting off this hill. At any rate, I also feel that if if we're talking about a million dollar project, I think we're probably talking about more. And if PG and E is only contributing three hundred and forty thousand to it, I'm very concerned about putting towns money towards what again, I think is in the, in the end, a rather useless project in terms preventing real fire danger. And I wouldn't spend a dime of of the town's money on a, again, a project that in the end doesn't solve the problem of fire danger. I think I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much, Werner. Not seeing any other hands up at this time. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments on this from folks who have not had a chance to speak yet?
No, Maureen Beckman, we did not receive any email comments.
Great. Thank you. And seeing no other hands up, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. And again, I'll invite staff to start by just making any points they might want to address public comments.
I'll just start, RJ, and you'll finish as you finish strong for me. So I think all the comments were well taken. This is a project. We want to secure the Rule 28 monies. We're not committing our own funds. There's much discussion moving forward. As Mr. Kaufman stated, we'll always look at that. Luckily, sanitary district two is part of the town. And so we always look at opportunities when we underground to share cost and to solve multiple problems at once. So we will absolutely do that if this project ultimately is approved down the road. Fire safety, we've talked about it. We live it, right? It's, we're attacking it from multiple areas to solve the problem. This is a specific one of not necessarily a downed power line causing a fire. It's a downed power line. Right? Blocking the area. And so this is one area that we absolutely need to correct. All the other comments are really going to be spoken to, or we're going to discuss publicly for a period of years. Is the project, the process that we're doing now, that, you know, with our consultant of understanding the weak points following data of PG and E of where they are in our community, and then what we're going to do about it prioritized. The town has never officially analyzed PG and E in our community and given an official ask based on information and their own decision making matrix through the CPU seat. We've never done that. Well, we're about to. We're about to do it and engage the community on what that is and isn't. And then what is the ask? And then we're going to go attack it. So that's, that is moving forward. The Rule 28 monies, though, as RJ said, the game's changing in December of twenty twenty two, it looks like. So you can't buy credits like we talked about before. You can't share credits like we've discussed before. They're going out of the twenty, the Roll 28 game. So we want to secure those funds. And then really use our analysis as we move forward. We'll have a number of probably recommendations for districts in our community. But again, that's three to six months from now. This is just specifically, if you step back and think about it, it's a small pot of money. It's a few hundred thousand dollars, but we want to secure it and solve at least one of the problems we know we have. And that's really what this discussion is. But we're not committed necessarily even to this project, but we want to secure those funds. So we position ourselves when that when that report becomes live and we have that community conversation, we have a checkbox, you know, we have a project we can start to talk about and wrap our head around.
And I'll jump in on some of these other questions that came up. So really, once we move this forward and we execute the agreement, then we can initiate discussions with PG and E. And it'll go kind of the ball going their court for a period of time where they provide that more detailed estimate. And then we can actually have some figures to look at and kind of understand, you know, how we implement and potentially fund that. So there's a question about what we call services. So that's the individual lines that go to individual homes. So any of these homes that are within the boundary that's part of the staff report, you know, and they're listed by parcel, those homes would have their service also undergrounded as part of the project. Separately, yes, as Mr. Kaufman mentioned, absolutely will look at opportunities to reduce costs with our utility districts, mainly in what's most common is these communication lines that are also on the overhead line. So they will also be required to go underground along with the electrical facility. It won't just be the electrical and then you have the, you know, cable and communication still up there. So that's all part of kind of that overall 28 project package. As far as some of the comments about, you know, 28 program and uphill, and I'm not saying there may not be warrants that it wouldn't particularly be eligible for 28 funds based on the criteria. Wildfire mitigation isn't really part of the criteria. It's one that was considered and spoken to in their, their most recent staff proposal. But it's not one of their criteria. It's a secondary criteria that we're kind of using to further justify it. But it's not their specific criteria. And then just kind of overall tools in the toolbox. Absolutely. This is I'm not going to rank any of them, but it's just one of several tools. And for anyone who's kind of joined us for the climate adaptation assessment and heard from our fire experts, you know, they talked about kind of how these other tools work and maybe where you get the most bang for your buck and but, you know, to the point of a downed power line, regardless of whether it's initiating a fire, you know, it's blocking the road. And hopefully I just most of the questions.
Great. Thank you, RJ and Todd. We're going to go to discussion among council members now. Who would like to start us off? Bob?
Just to be clear, I just want to reiterate what these guys have said. We are not authorizing spending any town funds this evening. We are authorizing, if we vote for this, to spend some staff time. That's it. Am I correct in that? Todd and RJ? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Bob. Who else would like to speak on this? If nobody else has anything, so Charles, was that a hand?
Yeah, I just, you know, yeah, it's not about, for me, I think it's really about the egress, right? And I'd just like to remind our residents that Paradise Fire, Santa Rosa, some of the deaths were in the cars. They weren't actually in the homes. And it was the inability to leave, even if there were multiple exits, when it gets compacted, especially if it goes to one other, you just can't get everybody out. And that's really what this is about is if one of the poles blows over and you're not able to get down out of the hill from the top or the middle or anywhere, that's a real threat to the community. And that's why they're really being addressed is the crux of why we're getting the design funds to understand how to do that properly. And it's based on, you know, previous research we did for the climate assessment and egress paths. And so that's available to the residents as well who are new to the discussion about why this was a candidate that was chosen and prioritized. So.
Good point, Charles. Thank you. Anybody else want to make any comments on this? And if not, I'll just say, you know, I agree completely with with what Bob said. And I really appreciate the the great public comment and and the clarifying comments from Todd and RJ. I think, you know, what we're doing tonight is really setting the stage to be able to follow the science on on how and whether and where it makes sense to do undergrounding in Cordera. And as Bob said, there's no cost now. You know, basically what we're doing is just making sure that we're not leaving money from PG and E on the table. You know, that wouldn't make any sense. But again, you know, I agree with a lot of the public comment we received, I think, co-trenching, absolutely glad, glad that RJ touched on that. See if there's any synergies there. And, you know, I understand that we're not at a decision point yet with regards to undergrounding, but that we're really just, you know, taking a step forward towards being able to make a fully informed decision on undergrounding down the road. So I'm, I'm all in favor of this. Anybody else want to make any comments? And if not, we will entertain a motion on resolution number thirty one twenty twenty one. Bob?
Move to approve the resolution.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Charles. Great. Thank you. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
That's member Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. And that brings us to item six D, which is consideration, possible adoption of resolution number thirty two twenty twenty one to reinstate the assistant engineer position classification at the Department of Public Works, and I will turn it over to staff.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is the second reading for the assistant engineer position. This is one that has historically been part of the town job descriptions, but for reasons I'm not fully aware of in two thousand nine, it was removed from the job class list. And we think it's a good essential position to bring some bright staff on and train them up through the ranks. And we think it's you know, just also a very common and standard job to be used that most engineers kind of go up through the ranks with. So we'd like to seek your approval to reinstate that position.
Great. Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions for staff? And seeing none, do we have any public comment on this item? Any members of the public who would like to comment, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this?
Thank you, Rebecca. No, we did not receive any emails, public comments.
Great. Thank you. And seeing no hands up, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a possible motion. Do we have any comments from council members? We'll start with Fred.
Yeah, no comments, Bill. Go ahead and make the motion.
Great. Thank you. And yeah, just I'll reiterate for the public that this is our second, our second meeting. This is a two meeting item per council policy. So we discussed this at at the previous meeting. Thank you, Fred. Make the motion. Do we have a second? Great. Rebecca, you can, you can put down whichever you like, and we'll take a vote when you're ready, please.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes our business items and brings us to item seven, council reports, and we will start with the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just want to say, because it just brings me great pride. I just love it to death. It follows through our closed session. But when you hear RJ and Adam and Daria and Rebecca, like the problem solving that they bring to the table, we have a great team. And so we're in good hands. And so tonight was a perfect example of that. So good job, RJ and Adam. So most importantly, I'm going to be away next week. And so we'll be putting that great staff in charge while I'm away. I'm going to be leaving the country on Sunday and I'll come back the following weekend. I'll send an email alert out to the council. So I will miss you all and but you're in good hands. Please don't replace me while I'm gone. Cabo. Looking forward to it. One of my first vacations in a while. And, you know, we've been talking a lot about just getting back to normal. And I just really want to throw out my sincere gratitude to Zins Bar, Kyle over there that owns the bar. They did a great thing with us. They collaborated with the Lions. And so thank you to the Lions Club. The Chamber and staff really made a special event on the Fourth of July up there at Manki Park. I think we're, most of us were there. It was just great to see smiles on everyone's face. I think our community really appreciated it. And so it was just a great, great Fourth of July weekend. And with that, we're just looking forward to getting back to normal. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Todd, and enjoy your well deserved vacation. We'll go to council member reports and we will start with Charles. Nothing to report. We'll go to Leela.
Just a couple of quick ones. I second Todd's thoughts about the Fourth of July. My family and I were, we were at Town Park and we're also over at Manki Park and really enjoyed that. That was fabulous. I mean, nothing beats the parade, but it was exciting to see that we got, we had some festivities going on there. So that was great. We had a meeting with the Home Key Steering Committee a couple of weeks ago. Friend and I were both there and they presented some possible plans for the renovations that they're going to do and the landscaping there. So that's going to be coming out, a lot of information about that for the public and chances for the public to get involved there and give their comments. So that's exciting to see. And then, I'm sorry. Oh, it's also really the home key. A group of us went over and did some meeting. The landscaping over there was looking pretty sad. Probably partly because of the drought and the lava watering, but also just the breeze. So our volunteer coordinator, Adriana, on the Home Key Committee organized a group of citizens and one of the residents of Home Key came out and participated as well and spent about two hours and I think it was a lot better.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's go to Bob.
Yeah, we had a meeting of the Marin Wildfire Protection Association and we agreed to implement the work plan, which I think I mentioned before, has over one hundred projects. And we're going to include creating a interactive map that will show all the projects on it. So it's public to see the status of projects and where they are and really give you an idea of what we're doing in the county because it's massive. Also, we had a BPAC meeting and you heard a little bit about that tonight, but we also agreed to move ahead with the San Clemente sidewalk widening project, which has been worked on for years. But I think we finally got consensus and agreement with the neighborhood and funding. So you'll be hearing about that more soon, but that will really But I think we finally got consensus and agreement with the neighborhood and funding. So you'll be hearing about that more soon, but that will really help. Kids on bikes going to school out of the Bayside. So we're really looking forward to that, too. Thanks.
Great. Thanks a lot, Bob. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thanks. I attended the MC, MCC, MC, uh, monthly meeting. I also attended age-friendly Corder Madara and just one note there, August eighth is when we're scheduled to honor our seniors of our seniors. So keep marked down your calendars. As Lila mentioned, I also attended the Casa Bruna Monthly Meeting. And she alluded to this, but mentioned it is that we are gonna tentatively, we're scheduling, we're looking at having a community meeting in, I think, the first or second week in August. To kind of go to the community and say, these are the plans for the exterior, what they're going to look like. So there's an opportunity there to get input. The neighbors on both sides have already provided input to Adam and also those at Marin County. And then just mirrored what others have said before, uh, Fourth of July was a great event and then kudos to Kyle Zins for being persistent, I want to say. And working with staff to pull the whole thing off. Again, it was truly a partnership and it was just a great job well done on all parts. So I think everybody really enjoyed it.
Great. Thank you, Fred. And I agree. I, I was also at Manki Park and, and it was just so nice to see a huge turnout, you know, big crowd all having a fantastic time. So, you know, huge success to, uh, to, um, you know, Zins Wine Bar and Kyle and town staff and the Chamber and everybody who came together to make that happen. It was really incredible to see. A few quick items. The League of Cities is going to be having their annual conference September twenty-second to twenty-fourth. You guys already know because it was on our consent calendar. The league is also having a North Bay Division meeting next week and, uh, we're going to be focusing on learning about some of the bills related to policing. That are currently brewing in Sacramento and we've put together a little panel discussion. That will be featuring our fantastic trusty police chief, uh, Mike Norton. So he's going to join us. Along with, I believe, the Vallejo Police Chief and then a policy analyst from the League of Cities. Uh, and another League of Cities member, Pippin Do, who's a Vallejo Council Member and, and is very involved in the league's advocacy around public safety. Issues. So it's going to be really, I think, helpful to get, uh, Chief Norton and the Vallejo Chiefs kind of insight on. What the impact of these policing bills that are currently brewing in Sacramento. Might be anybody is of course welcome to join us for that. If you're interested in, in the material, I'm happy to. Pass along to Rebecca, the, the kind of list of bills we'll be talking about and the Zoom information. So folks can tune in. If they'd like to. The other thing, little hiccup at CMSA, uh, over the weekend, they had one of their digesters. The, the little cover that goes over it ruptured. So these are the digestors that basically. Turn, you know, food waste into methane, which they use to run through a generator and create green energy. The, the digester kind of busted and so it's going to be out of commission for probably a number of months and we're actually calling a special meeting later this week to declare. An agency emergency to hopefully speed up the process to fix that thing and get it back. Up and running in a timely fashion. So I just wanted to let you guys know about that. But other than that, everything is going well at CMSA. And I think that is all I have for you guys right now. So that concludes. Our council reports. Item eight, discussion of draft agenda. Any comments on the draft agenda for our next meeting? And if not, the fun does not stop. We have an SD two meeting tonight, so we're going to adjourn the town council meeting. And call to order the Tuesday, July sixth meeting of the sanitary district two board of directors. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Board member Lee?
Here.
Board member Mongan?
Here.
Board member Avasio?
Here.
Or Vice President Casissa?
Here.
Or President Beckman?
Here. Thank you. That brings us to open time for public comment and this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any items that are not on our agenda for tonight and folks will be given three minutes apiece to comment. Any member of the public who would like to make any comments, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email public comment at TCM mail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed comments for SD two open time?
No, my backman did not receive any email comments.
Great. Thank you. And we have no hands up, so we'll close open time. We have no presentations tonight, which brings us to our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the board or public may pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion. Would any members of the board like to pull an item from our consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll turn it over to the public. If any members of the public would like to pull an item from our consent calendar, please raise your hand via Zoom or email public comment at TCM mail.org and I see a hand. So we're going to go to Roy.
Question, is the fog part of the consent calendar or is that a separate agenda item?
That is a separate agenda item five B.
Okay, I'll, I'll comment on that.
Great.
When I get there.
Perfect. Great. Thank you, sir. Seeing no other hands up for the SD two consent calendar, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board for a motion on the consent calendar. Bob?
Move item four A through four C.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Fred, thank you. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Mongan?
Yes.
Board member Avasio?
Yes.
Or Vice President Casissa?
Yes.
Or President Beckman?
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes the consent calendar. Bring this to item five, public hearings. Our first item is five A. Just first reading and possible introduction of ordinance number forty-seven. And this is pertaining to adding definitions. Oh, my gosh, this is a really long title. I'm going to turn this over to staff for an introduction and staff report.
Great. Uh, thank you, District President. I'll be presenting some items and I'm going to be relying on Amy to help fill in the blanks as she knows this administrative citation process quite well. So this overall process in a lot of way, almost always mirrors the similar process that went to town council. But this will be pertaining to sanitary district number two. And I've got a short presentation that I can go through and then I'll rely on my expert here as needed. So let me get that queued up. So on sanitary district side. In particular, I, I think it lacks some practical and efficient means for achieving compliance with our district bowls codes and standards. A lot of the tools that we have in the tool belt right now involve, you know, taking legal action and going to court and, and other things. So, you know, they're declaring. Violating property of public nuisance and proceed with an abatement proceeding to obtain a court order for residents to vacate. Obtain a court order to disconnect the property from the system. And correct the violation and place a lien on the property. So all of these are pretty significant. Outcomes and, and don't really leave a lot of kind of middle ground to hopefully, you know, nudge violators toward compliance. And so staff has looked at. These alternative methods of enforcement through this administrative citation process. So as part of the process, um, a violator would have, you know, two primary options, pay the citation or seek an administrative review or a hearing. Hearing would allow the person to provide additional evidence and be heard by a impartial hearing officer. And that officer would provide a ruling that. You know, based on evidence supported or presented about whether the citation stands or does not. And depending on that, um, potential, the fees would be reimbursed if it turns out the. You know, property owner resident was prevailing and otherwise would. Kind of be tacked on to the, the citation itself. Here are the dollar amounts for the levels of violation, first, second, third, et cetera. And mainly that is all I have and Amy, feel free to jump in with any of the details that I may have missed.
Um, RJ, I think you summarized it really well. Um, I just, just a couple of things is. For, for some types of violations of the code, the first step would be to give a notice of violation and, and give. The property owner the opportunity to correct, particularly for the private sewer lateral ordinance. I think you have a hundred and eighty days to correct. And, and some of the others, you have a shorter time period. There's a couple of violations that you wouldn't need to. That is if you were to intentionally damage the sanitation, you know, a, a part of the sanitation district. Those kinds of things, you can issue the citation on the spot. And I think really this is just. You know, uh, special district laws, state laws don't get updated very regularly and so. As, as times change and new ways to innovate. There, there aren't as many tools to gain compliance as you want, but administrative citations are one way to do that. And so more and more districts as well as, uh, you know, towns and cities are moving toward. That process to have a very fair way to do it, but also a cost effective and efficient way that doesn't require going to court. So. We're, we're just seeing a more and more governmental entities move toward this. We also took. There were some inconsistencies in Title twenty-one, some redundancies, and so we took this opportunity to do a little bit of cleanup. From some of the provisions, there was not a provision to issue a stop work order and we thought that was really important for. RJ to have that tool in the event the contractor is proceeding with work that might be damaging and we really need to get a stop. So we, we took an opportunity to do a little bit of cleanup as well. But I, I know the town just went through this with the town ordinances, but I'm, I'm happy also to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you both. Uh, do we have any questions from council members on their board members on this item? And I am not seeing any, so we will turn this over to the public. If any members of the public would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom. Or email public comment at TCM mail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item?
Thank you, my backman. We did not receive any emails public comments.
Great. Thank you. And seeing no hands up, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion and a possible motion. Would any board members like to make any comments? The only thing that I would like to say, if nobody else has anything, is just that this is incredibly nerdy, but to me, this type of like cleanup and streamlining stuff is like one of the most gratifying parts of local government. I love it. I, I want to thank staff. I know you guys are kind of doing this push throughout. I feel like everything that you touch, you just kind of streamline and modernize and update and it really makes. The town function so much more smoothly and efficiently. So thank you. Um, and with that, we would happily entertain a motion on this ordinance number forty-seven. Bob?
Move to approve ordinance number forty-seven.
Great. Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Fred? All right. Thank you. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Oh, it is introduction.
Oh.
Just, just to clarify, it will be brought back if it.
Great.
Or the board votes to introduce it, it will be back at the next meeting.
My bad. Great. Thank you. Okay, then, um, I believe that concludes item five A then, uh, and breaks.
Oh, I still, we still need to take a vote, but I just was there. Yeah.
Oh.
The motion is to introduce.
Oh. Okay.
Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Mongan?
Yes.
Board member Avasio?
Yes.
Or Vice President Casissa?
Yes.
And Board President Beckman?
Yes, thank you very much, Rebecca. And now that brings us to item five B, which is first reading and possible introduction ordinance number forty-eight, which pertains to adopting CMSA's fats, oils and grease ordinance. Into our own code and I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you. Theme of the day, another short presentation for you, um, this one on ordering ordinance number forty-eight, talking about a. New but updated fats, oils and grease ordinance. So just on a very introductory level, you know, what is fats, oils and grease? It's. Things like bacon grease and food grease that end up in our. Our sewer system that create, create blockages and, and other problems and can lead to sewer system overflows, which are. Health hazard. And so it's definitely one of our primary directives is to minimize as many of those overflows as possible. And so with that, we have. A current fats, oils and grease program and we have some updated revisions that have been already approved at the Central Marin Sanitation Agency level. That we also want to align with and hopefully consider and approve them. And update our ordinance accordingly. This is the first reading. But definitely important, an important topic to our overall goals as a district. So the fog program is a requirement of the state dating back to two thousand and six. As mentioned prior, this has already been approved at CMSA. Back in February of twenty-two-one, um, the full ordinance was included as an attachment to the staff report, but also it's now. Planned to be embedded in our municipal code. We're in prior. Programs, it was kind of mentioned by reference. So what are the key revisions? So it's some updated terminology to align with the. Bay Area Clean Water Agencies. It's kind of the, the. Main group that kind of organizes these types of. You know, procedures and, and guidelines and best management practices. It removes some kind of dated language about the development of the fog program from two thousand and six. I think at the time. It was a newer concept and so now that it's been in effect for many years, I think it was removed because it wasn't necessary to. Explain all the reasons to have a fog program. So there's, as mentioned, some updated, more specific language about. You know, these types of devices that prevent grease, to trap grease, and it kind of goes into specifics of, you know, which models are approved and whatnot. It talks about maintenance schedules and requirements, per requirements. Enforcement process and all of those things. So currently CMSA does administer the fog program on behalf of sanitary district two. And that would continue as part of this ordinance. We also have a new agreement, which is. Very similar to the, the prior agreement with some slightly more outlined roles and responsibilities. But overall, this is, you know, very important, yet not a significant cost program. We budget about ten K, we, we budget ten thousand dollars annually and, and usually don't use the full amount and, and we don't think that. These new revisions will cost. Cause us to have to budget additional funds, so. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Great. Thank you, RJ. Any questions from board members for staff on this item? Yeah, Lila?
Are we, I wonder about the burden to small businesses of, of complying with this? Would we have to estimate that? That's why I was more based on what the changes are and whether we expect sort of new businesses to get. Brought under this that weren't there before.
Yeah, so a couple pieces there. So. The currently operating business. Wouldn't necessarily have new requirements. They would have to do some sort of change in ownership. Additional renovation to be triggered. But that's based on. Kind of what we're calling a, a hotspot base program. We do have the ability to go to a. Blanket program in the future, which is more of a expansion of, of kind of who's regulated. But that's not what's before you today. It's, it's really kind of. As changing ownership and other things, renovations, then they would be brought into the, the program.
Great. Thank you, Lila. Any other questions from board members? And seeing none, we're going to turn this over to the public. So any member of the public who would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand via Zoom or email public comment at TCM mail.org and we will start with Roy.
Good evening, board members. Question, it's the. Ordinance or the chapter twenty-one fifty and some of the subsections are a little bit fuzzy. Or there's a fog of confusion when I read it. Is this targeting, is this ordinance targeting specifically commercial operations? Or is it also going to be used to go after single-family residents, everyone in the sanitary district to duplexes, apartments, et cetera? So when I look at, if you look at twenty-one fifty, it says the regulations for control of the fog. It should show or should say from commercial operations into the wastewater collection system. If this ordinance is targeted toward. Commercial operations and then I one, I two and I, 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 that's I three. There's wording in there that tells me that they're going after individual homes. Says kitchens on I. It says food services or kitchens. Should say commercial kitchens and I, 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 it also says kitchens. Should it not say commercial kitchens? And then on I, I. Six lines down, it says other, and other food handling facilities. Should it not say and other commercial food handling. Facilities. And just let me point out in I, section I. It talks about the fog means any substance such as an animal or vegetable product. That is used or is a byproduct of food preparation. that is used or is a byproduct of food preparation, food service. There is something that is going down the sewers that is a byproduct of food preparation and it's poop. So is poop part of the fog? So those are my questions. I hope we can clear it up and I hope it's just after commercial operations. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Roy. And I'm not seeing any other hands up on this item. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments on this?
Thank you, my back. And no, we did not receive any email comments.
Great, thank you. And seeing no other hands, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. And I'd like to start by inviting RJ and/or Amy to answer Roy's question.
Yeah, so the key definition in the ordinance is under food service establishment. So it means any facility preparing and or serving food for commercial use or sale. This includes restaurants, cafes, lunch counters, cafeterias, hotels, hospitals, convalescent homes, factory or school kitchens, coffee house shops, catering kitchens, bakeries, grocery stores of food preparation, excluding stores of only food, warrant operations, meat cutting and preparation and other food handling facilities not listed above where fog may be introduced into the wastewater collection system. So it is not pertaining to residences.
Yeah, I'd also just like to add, so under state law, we can incorporate by reference in ordinance another ordinance, which is what we're doing. But state law requires that we, we can't incorporate by reference any enforcement or penalties. And so that's why we have included just an excerpt of the CSMA ordinance into our chapter or title 21. But you have to look at the full CSMA ordinance to really understand it. We contemplated putting the whole CSMA ordinance into title 21. And my anal lawyer side would have really liked to do that. However, I think the CSMA ordinance is 18, 20, 24 pages long. It's actually written more like a regulation than an ordinance and it just didn't seem worth repeating that whole thing into our administrative code. But so when you look at this, you really have to look back at the full ordinance to get a complete understanding of the program.
Thank you, guys. And I can just back that up by saying I sit on the CMSA board and this was not intended to apply to residences. Your, your home kitchen is not a food handling establishment in the eyes of this ordinance. Do we have any comments from board members? And if not, we will entertain a motion on introducing ordinance number 48. Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second? Great, thank you, Lila. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Board Member Lee.
Yes.
Board Member Mongan.
Yes.
Board Member Avasio.
Yes.
Board Vice President Kessisa.
Yes.
And Board President Beckman.
Yes, thank you. And that concludes our public hearings and brings us to our only business item of the night, 6A. Consideration and possible adoption of resolution number 062021, accepting the sanitary sewer easement adjacent to Casa Buena Drive. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Great, thank you. One more short presentation for you. So as part of our Meta Suite Drive Sewer Rehabilitation Phase One project, during the design, there were some kind of efficiencies identified to improve the overall kind of flow and effectiveness of the pipeline there. This is right at Casa Buena, right by the new Tesla dealership. So we actually have a, an existing easement that cuts through the southern part of that parking lot, which is still being used by the district. But we did notice a small 20 foot by 22 foot square that we didn't currently have rights to, but that allows us to have a more effective pipeline flow. And so this potential easement, it would provide a parallel redundant pipeline before crossing Highway 101. As mentioned, it improves the pipeline flow. It would make access easier because it would have more right of way that's continuous and available from Casa Buena, right next to the Tesla dealership. And then it also would provide some additional kind of surcharge protection for the apartment complex adjacent to the Tesla dealership to the south. Our new engineering, our consultant team has been working along with town staff with Tesla and they've kind of arranged to, you know, with your approval to provide us the easement. And we would compensate them through constructing or realigning the driveway that already exists there. And part of the driveway needs to come out anyway as part of being in conflict with the portion of the pipeline that is in the existing easement. But overall, we value about an $8,000 improvement that would be kind of the financial compensation for this 440 square foot easement. Here's a survey diagram showing where it is. As you can see, here's Casa Buena here. You know, if we went off the screen to the right, that would be Highway 101. But oddly, we have this kind of missing square here. And the pipeline has to kind of cut the corner. And so this allows us to use some of that space again for this parallel pipeline and for future maintenance access as needed. And with that, any questions?
Great, thank you, RJ. Any questions from the board for staff on this item? And seeing none, we'll turn this over to the public. Any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this?
No, we did not receive any email comments on the site.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion and a possible motion. Fred?
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion.
Great, thank you. Do, sorry, did we have a second?
I'll say again.
Thank you, Bob. Great, thanks. Sorry, I got some feedback or something. Great. And this is resolution number 062021. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Board Member Lee.
Yes.
Board Member Mongan.
Yes.
Board Member Avasio.
Yes.
Board Vice President Kessisa.
Yes.
Board President Beckman.
Yes, thank you. That concludes our business items and brings us to item seven, District Manager and Board Member Reports. Is there a District Manager Report?
Nothing to report today. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any board member reports? All right, seeing none, do we have any comments on our upcoming draft agenda? And if not, we are adjourned for the night.